And good evening. Welcome to the May 25, 2023, meeting of the Longview City Council. Tonight, our prayer and pledge will be led by representatives of Cub Scout PAC 29 and Boy Scout Troops 618, both of which are organized out of Great United Methodist Church. And Lucas Watson will be the one to actually deliver the prayer and the pledge, and he is the son of Bob Watson in our engineering department, so please rise.
Please join me in prayer. Our Father, make us trustworthy, for there are those who trust us. Make us loyal, for through loyalty we reach our highest ideals. Teach us to be helpful, for through helpfulness do we forget our selfness. Make us friendly, for there are so many who need a friend. Train us in courtesy, for courtesy is the carpet on life's floor. Make us kind, for kindness is the oil in the cogs of life's machinery. Insist upon our obedience, for victory comes only to him who obeys. Make us cheerful, for cheerfulness is the green grass among the rocks in the path of life. Train us in thrift, for thrifty habits brighten our future. Make us brave, brave in the dark and brave in the night, but save us from becoming fakers in the bravery. Help us to be clean, clean in thoughts, in speech, and in deed, and may we remember that our bodies are thy holy temples, and that any abuse thereof is to tamper with thy great plans. Above all, oh God, help us to be reverent towards all the things which thou hast made for our enjoyment when we are in thy great outdoors, among the trees, along the streams, and on the hillsides. May we know it was thee who made the waters flow, the trees to reach the heavenward, the mountains to endure all ages. In all these things we ask, thou will help us, and may we never forget the oath to which we have pledged ourselves, so that through we may help live these points of our scout law. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for participating tonight. And Lucas, what a well-spoken young man you are. Thank you very much for your presence in our council chambers tonight. Before we get to this evening's election items, I'd like to take a few minutes to recognize outgoing District 4 Councilwoman Kristin Shahara. Kristin was first elected in 2014 and has served three terms, consecutive terms, representing East Longview and District 4. During her time as in the council, Kristin has been instrumental across the city, but two of her particular passions came from helping men and women in the Longview Fire Department with the Longview Fireman's Relief and Retirement Fund, and caring for the animals of our community through the construction of the Stagent Dog Park and the Longview Animal Care and Adoption Center. She's also served in leadership with Longview Pets or Worth Saving, which is Paws, and raises money to support the adoption center and the animals in our community. I wasn't on the council when Kristin first joined the council, but I did ask Terry Miller I was elected mayor, I wasn't really sure how I was going to mesh with Kristin. if he wouldn't mind to just put a short little video together to just remember some of the We had a rocky start, let's just say the least, but I can tell you now that Kristin things that Kristin has been a part of while she's been on the council, so please enjoy the video. [Music] has been one of the most steadfast and well-rounded council members I've seen on this council in my going on 18 years in this, whatever you want to call this business. But I have been honored to work with you and beside you, and I appreciate your diligence and your attention to the city and the attention to your constituents and the way you handle things with wonderful, wonderful kid gloves, but yet you get the job done. There's always ways to do things. You can be abrasive, or you can be kind, and you still get to the same endpoint, and you've always chosen the kind path, and I appreciate that. I always count on you when it comes to bouncing things off, to see a point of view, and I appreciate that very much. We do have a few things for you before you depart. We have a plaque, and this plaque reads, "In appreciation for your dedicated service to the citizens of Longview and residents of District 4, 2014 to 2023." That's for you. Here is the portrait that has hung in these chambers for these nine years of your service here. It looks pretty much the same.
Thank you.
Actually better as years have gone on. We have a fire hydrant and a dog statue for you because of all the things you've done for the fire department and the community's animals. We wanted you to have this for your commemoration of your service. We do have a little card for Richard, because we all know how our spouses and significant others play a role in this job. It's not easy, and they didn't sign up for it, we did, but yet they're drugged through the same mud that we're drugged through countless times. And so we just want you to know how much we appreciate you. We're going to miss you terribly, but I think you've got a bright future ahead, and I have no doubt you'll be back here soon enough. So please say something if you'd like.
Thank you. That was very thoughtful, and I appreciate that. It has been a true honor and privilege to serve for the last nine years. I am grateful for every single person that has ever contacted me. I'm glad for the opportunity to serve and glad for the opportunity to make our community just a teeny bit better, so thank you so much for granting me that opportunity, and it has been an honor to serve with every single one of you. Every single council member I've served with has been a professional and been here for the right reason, and I am so proud and grateful to Longview for having leaders with servant hearts that are here because they want to make Longview the best that we can be. So thank you for all of my gifts and your honesty and your friendship, Andy, and I'm glad to turn it over tonight to John Newstad, who I know will do a great job serving here as well, so thank you.
You will be very missed. Thank you, Kristin. [Applause] We will now move on to the presentation of the oath of offices for councilmember-elect of District Number 3, Ms. Shepherd.
Mr. Ray Wade, you would step forward, please. And if you will raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Ray Wade.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of City Council.
Of City Council.
Of the City of Longview.
Of the City of Longview.
And the State of Texas.
And the State of Texas.
And will.
And will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect and defend.
Protect and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
I get the presentation.
Congratulations, Long Island.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, buddy. Well deserved.
It's an honor.
An honor to serve with you as well.
Yes, sir.
And now we will have President's Oath of Office for City Councilmember-elect of District Number 4, Ms. Shepherd.
All right. Mr. Newstad, if you would like to come up and bring your family if you would like. Perfect. Good to have you all with us. And if you will raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, John Newstad.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of City Council.
Of City Council.
Of the City of Longview.
Of the City of Longview.
And the State of Texas.
And the State of Texas.
And will.
And will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect and defend.
Protect and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
And step your seat up, please.
Congratulations. I know. I wish I had laid a seat.
We swore in two people tonight.
We're a family thing. We're a dad.
That was great. Thank you. Nice to see you.
Take your seats, yeah. Change out some names.
Well, that's always exciting. Thank you all for being here for those presentations. Welcome, John. Okay, back to business. We are now to citizen comment. Do you have a speaker card tonight? So let's get to it. Shannon Moore.
Before you start, everyone I call up for speaker cards, please be sure to state your name and your address before you start speaking. Thank you.
My name is Shannon Moore, 1510 Fuller Drive here in Longview. I'm basically here because I've been a resident of Longview all my life. I'm also a member of the Planning and Zoning Adjustment Board. I've been there for about two years. My concern today is the Juneteenth festivities. For me, there was no input, no way for the community to put any input for years. It has been done by the community, and now that it's a federal, deemed a federal holiday, the city has taken over, but there's no way for us to give input. They've put up online where you can make a comment online, but there's no feedback from that. So my question is, why is there not a committee for it? Why is there not any input from the community, and we've been doing it for so long in this community? And now that it's federal holiday, what does that mean? Is there federal funding for it? Where did the funding go? I mean, it can go on and on, and if there was a committee, we would have answers to these questions. When I called to check on certain things on the agenda for Juneteenth, there are still things that are not finalized, so there is still time. So, I mean, where's the answer, then? Why can't we have a committee this year?
We're not allowed to answer you. We just have to listen to this forum.
Okay, so...
But we can have someone meet you at the back when you're through speaking, they can help answer your questions.
Okay, and so when you say they'll help us, are they going to do this for this year? Is this for next year? That's where we're at, because literally for us, for me, and for my culture, I don't see much representation for Juneteenth, for me. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. I have DeTanya Bradley.
Good afternoon to the council and to the members of the City of Longview. My name is DeTanya Denise Bradley. I live at 103 Peterson Place, of course, Longview, Texas, 75602. Tonight I come to address the City Councilmember. First of all, thank you for giving us this avenue where we can come and express. I have deep, deep rooted concerns also about Juneteenth. I noticed last week, or maybe a couple of days ago, that the Juneteenth flyer was already out. That perturbed me because I too have been a citizen of the City of Longview ever since I was 14 years old. I'm not going to say how many years that's been, but since I was 14 years old. And for the last four or five years, I know two or three people that are prominent African-Americans in this community that have funded Juneteenth out of their pocket personally, and I do not, and I did not see anyone ask us in this, in our community, what we thought, what we needed, what does Juneteenth mean to us? I recognize now that it is a national holiday, but it has been our holiday before it has become nationally recognized. And if we're talking about solidifying, getting peace, because this is what this is all about, if we want to get peace with each other, the first thing we have to do is be able to sit down at a table and talk to one another. We cannot project one side to know it all and one side to know nothing. We cannot assume and make flyers and already have everything, already signed up and signed out without talking to me, or to my neighbor, or to her neighbor, or to her neighbor, or the people that has been doing this for years. We have been doing this on our own. I do appreciate the help, but what I'm saying is if we're looking for real change, we have to be able to sit down and talk. We cannot make anything concrete until we all put our input in. And this may have been a mistake, but it lets me know that we're not where we need to be as citizens in Longview, because you cannot use the word picnic on this flyer. Picnic comes from the term meaning to pick a nigger. This is on the Juneteenth flyer from when we were freed, when we got the message. This is how I know that we are not sitting down talking, we are not talking to each other, we have not made the best decisions for this city, for the Juneteenth, and if we, I would like to ask moving forward, before any decisions are finalized, you have to come to our culture, to my people, and our community, sit down and talk with us. We are very reasonable, and let's come up with something that everyone can be satisfied with, not what is deemed to be satisfiable to others that are not us. We don't know much about a hot air balloon race. We don't know much about softball tournament. We have other cultural festivities that we have been doing for hundreds and hundreds of years that are not represented here on this flyer. And so if we're going to talk about color, and if we're going to talk about change, and if we're going to be a nation, starting with a city that really wants to make a difference... Okay, well, y'all better had a cut it off.
Okay. Thank you. And just so you know, Dietrich, would you just come in just a second? I want Dietrich Johnson's in charge of this, so just so y'all know who to talk to, just wave at him, Dietrich, so they can see you afterwards. Dietrich's in charge of the Juneteenth celebration, so just so you know who you're dealing with, okay? Thank you. Okay. Next, we have Reverend Lamar Jones.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lamar Jones. I live at 310 Choctaw. Been in Longview all my life. And I come, I come to share not just what my thoughts are, but other people in the communities. I didn't just come up trying to represent me, I'm not representing no organization. I'm involved in several community organizations, been involved in Longview a long time, so when I stand to speak, I'm sharing what other people who are not standing to speak have shared with me their concerns. I have three that I'm going to share, and I'm going to be out the way. Question number one, why only food vendors? This is the community celebration, not just for people who do food. In the past, vendors sold T-shirts, organization memberships, jewelry, et cetera. Number two, why is the parade stopping at Foster Middle School? Traditionally, we stopped at Broaden, and there were no problems that we are aware of. Now, parents will have to pick up their students, their children, at Foster Middle School and drive them to Broaden Recreational Center. The community wants the original stop at Broaden Recreational Center to continue. Number three, why is the only city employees on the committee preparing for the event with no community members on it? Does not look fair, does not look right. So we are asking that we all need to sit down at a table and come together and try to work out a way to make this happen as a community working together. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I hope I don't mispronounce this, but I can't really read it, really. Mandel Stoker? Mondel Snoker? Oh, okay. There you go. Sorry about that, buddy.
That's okay. Mandel Stoker, 1207 Temple Streets, at Longview, Texas, 75604. And I'm talking about Juneteenth as well. I talked to Mr. Dietrich Johnson a few weeks ago, and he told me that I had eight minutes to do a reenactment of the reading of the General Order III about General Gordon Granger, June 18, 1865. And to do it justice, I just don't feel like eight minutes is going to be enough. I'd like to have it for 15 minutes, at least 15 minutes, to educate the people, not just the black people, the white people, not children, everyone, about what Juneteenth was all about in the first place, and it began with, and that's what I would like to do. And we've got to remember that what happened June 18, 1865, is larger than any one person to know what happened on that particular day. So thank you for listening to me, the mayor and the city councilman, thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Karen Rich.
Hi, I'm Karen Rich at 1106 Still Meadow Lane. I'm honored to, honored to be here for the last meeting with Kristin and the new inductees. That was a very sweet ceremony, and I will support whatever they're talking about with Juneteenth. I mean, I really, I'm here for citizen comment, because I've noticed that I read the Parks Master Plan, and there's no plan to address the tennis facilities in Longview, and right now, we have, it's something that can be played for a lifetime, it can be played by anyone, from three to 83, all different types of people. Right now, they recommend for a city of our size to have four courts per 10,000, and I was doing some quick math, I think that 18 courts is not enough, and 12 of those are at the Longview High School. And so every time there's a junior high tournament, we're trying to reserve courts for a USTA match, which you have to be able to do in order to compete in USTA. So I think that a tennis facility would be awesome. Tyler's got one that has eight courts, and of course, with the advent of pickleball everywhere, it could be symbiotic as well. And we plan to have something presented more formally in the future, but I just wanted to speak to that, to make you all aware of the need, and, you know, just like the other day, I was just trying to book our team a place, and we had to, we ended up at Letourneau. So they, right now, there are 350 women playing in USTA in northeast Texas and 250 men, but that's not including all of the recreational play, but it's all taking place right now at the high schools. And so we just appreciate your consideration for that. We have commented as a group in the new survey that has gone out, and we plan to participate in that planning process, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jane Ball.
Hello, my name is Jane Ball. I live at 2 Atlas Circle, Longview, Texas, 75605. I'm also here to advocate for the inclusion of a tennis facility in the Parks and Rec Master Plan. I came to Longview in 2003, came from a fairly large metropolitan area, didn't know anybody, but one of the ways I got to know people, because I worked full-time, was playing in the tennis community, and met a really good group of women who I continue to play with up until this day. And I know, I do want to thank the council, I don't know if it's the city that does it or the independent school districts, for letting us use their facilities. We do have some nice facilities at Longview, we have some nice facilities at Pine Tree, Spring Hill, also some very nice courts. Those are where we play. USTA plays there, LTA, the Longview Tennis Association, plays there. However, they're kids first, and rightly so. They should have the ability to bump the adults if they have a tournament, which that happens fairly regularly. And so what I'm here for is to advocate for the inclusion of a tennis facility. I mean, it could be more. I mean, it could be a hard court facility, it could be basketball, it could be volleyball, and it could be tennis, all served by one building, and, you know, employees underneath one, you know, with the same FTE. But at any rate, I would like to advocate for that, and hopefully we'll get included in the Parks and Rec Master Plan. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, ma'am. The Honorable Mr. Ed Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. Ed Moore, 707 Willowood, Longview. I'd like to relay a short story. Back in January of 1968, the war in Vietnam was raging at its peak. Four of us were in Austin, sitting around enjoying some adult beverages. Two of the group was going to be commissioned as officers in two weeks and leave, and my buddy and I were going to be commissioned a few months from then. We visited more, imbibed some more, but eventually the gathering became a little melancholy, if you will, somber, and one of the group piped up and said that, you know, odds are within two years, two of us will be dead. We toasted each other, met and visited a little more, and then went on about our careers. Fast forward three years, one was dead, one was crippled, and the other two of us received minor wounds. I tell you this story, because I know we're all looking forward to a wonderful three-day memorial weekend, but I would ask all of us to please pause and remember why we are celebrating this holiday, for all the men and women who made the ultimate sacrifice. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Always appreciate you. Have no more speaker cards. We move on to public safety update. Chief Boone.
Mayor, councilmember-
participate in that planning, uh, process. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jane Ball. I live at, uh, Two Alice Circle, Longview, Texas, 75605. I'm also here to advocate for the inclusion of a tennis facility in the Parks and Rec Master Plan. I came to Longview in 2003, came from a fairly large metropolitan area, didn't know anybody, but one of the ways I got to know people, because I worked full-time, was playing in the tennis community, and, uh, met a really good group of women who are, I continue to play with up until, to this day. Um, and I know, I would, I do want to thank the council. I don't know if it's the city that does it, or the independent school districts, for letting us use their facilities. We do have some nice facilities at Longview. We have some nice facilities at Pine Tree, Spring Hill, also some very nice courts. Those are where we play. USTA plays there, LTA, the Longview Tennis Association, plays there. Um, however, they're kids first, and rightly so. They should have the, the ability to bump the adults if they have a tournament, which that happens fairly regularly. And so, um, what I'm here for is to advocate for the inclusion of a tennis facility. I mean, it could be more. I mean, it could be a hard court facility. It could be basketball, it could be volleyball, and it could be tennis, all served by one building and, you know, uh, employees underneath one, you know, with the same FTE. But, um, at any rate, I would like to, um, advocate for that, and hopefully we'll get included in the Parks and Rec Master Plan. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, ma'am. The Honorable Mr. Ed Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. Ed Moore, 707 Willowood, Longview. I'd like to relay a, a short story. Uh, back in January of 1968, the, the war in Vietnam was raging at its peak. Four of us in, were in Austin, sitting around enjoying some adult beverages. Two of the, the group was going to be commissioned as officers in two weeks and leave, and my buddy and I were going to be commissioned, uh, a few months from then. We, we visited more, imbibed some more, but eventually the, the, the gathering became a little melancholy, if you will, somber. And one of the group piped up and said that, you know, odds are, within two years, two of us will be dead. Um, we, we toasted each other, met and visited a little more, and then went on about our, our careers. Fast forward three years, one was dead, one was crippled, and the other two of us received minor wounds. I tell you this story, uh, because I know we're all looking forward to a, a wonderful three-day memorial weekend, but I would ask all of us to please pause and remember why we are celebrating this holiday, for all the men and women who made the ultimate sacrifice. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Always appreciate you. Have no more speaker cards. We move on to public safety update. Chief Boone.
Mayor, council members, Mr. McPhee. Go over our stats for our citizen survey, and we have 6,454 notifications that were sent out during the month of April, uh, and then with that, excuse me, too, too fast there. As far as the officer satisfaction, that was a four, seven out of five, and then the dispatch, uh, satisfaction with the dispatcher that, uh, the reporting party spoke with was a four, seven, five out of five. So again, very pleased with those numbers. And this is a newer update to our software that kind of shows the most recent comments on there, so you can see some of those, and has all your numbers scattered since, uh, we've started this. So you see that, uh, overall satisfaction or officer satisfaction, all three numbers are over four, five, but with a four, seven, one for officer satisfaction, four, six, six for dispatch satisfaction, and a four, five, seven for overall satisfaction with the police department. So again, very pleased with that, and glad to see that trending that way. And with that, I want to move over to some awards that were given out last week. Part of our Giants of Law Enforcement banquet on last, uh, Tuesday night. We'll start over there on the left side. We have our Supervisor of the Year for 2022, Sergeant Ryan Gibson. Below him, Rookie of the Year, Hunter Jones. We have our dispatcher, Lily Crafton. There in the center, we have Chris Birdsong. He's one of our post members, and he has been doing an awesome job with that. Um, above him, we have our Detective of the Year, Matthew Prescott, and then we have Deborah Raven, that is over 30 years with dispatch, and we are, uh, just grateful to have her and hope she wants to stay about another 20 or 25 years. And then we had Heather Holder, one of our newer employees. She was, uh, civilian of the year, so very proud of, of all of those. They all do a great job. And with last week being, uh, National Police Week, we got spoiled just a little bit. Eastman Credit Union came out and brought breakfast on Wednesday, uh, along with Arabella came out. And then Longview Regional, they, uh, they had a lunch for all Gray County law enforcement, and very appreciative of that. It was papasitas that they brought out for us. And then this past Monday, uh, the Longview Greckton Rotary had their annual golf tournament and dinner, and that, the, the golf portion's been going on for about 35 years, and the dinner, they were saying, Mr. Redd were saying, probably goes back about 70 years on doing that for, uh, police and fire. And, uh, there's also with the golf tournament, I'll go ahead and beat Chief Stillman to the punch, uh, they got to keep the trophy this year, but we'll get our revenge with the 9/11 tournament that'll come here in a few months. And then, uh, Mr. Easton here, uh, his parents won a silent auction at the rodeo for, uh, a ride along with a police officer to school, and for his last day of school, he got to ride with Officer Mars. So he definitely enjoyed that. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions.
Any question for Chief Boone? Thank you, sir. Chief Stillman.
Good evening, Mayor Mack, members of council. Mr. McPhee, thanks for the opportunity to update you with a few items that have happened in the fire department since our last meeting. Uh, we were fortunate, we're very fortunate that we have some of the capabilities and equipment that we have in the Longview Fire Department, particularly with our water rescue assets, and we had the opportunity to use, use some of those to conduct an exploratory tour, a guide, a guide tour, basically, of the Sabine River. I know there's been a lot of talk, and there's been some articles in the paper about expanding the activity possibilities along the Sabine River corridor. Uh, we have water rescue guys that train out there with this equipment all the time. They're very familiar with the layout, and, uh, so they were proud to be able to take these people on kind of a guided tour down the river to look at possibilities of that, that potential expansion of tourism and visitation coming to our city, as well as looking at additional locations for possible emergency access points that we could utilize as the fire department. So, we're, uh, we're always happy to step up and serve when we can use some of our equipment for, uh, for such a purpose. It's, it's fun to not always have to use it for emergency response, but for other important items such as this. Our next item is, Chief Boone, I already took the wind out of my sails on this, and, and, uh, challenge accepted. We've already got our scorecards filled out for that 9/11 tournament, so we'll be looking forward to that. Uh, we just can't wait. Uh, our firefighter of the year was re-recognized from 2022. That's Fire Driver Engineer Jake Robertson. Jake works out at Station 5 on A Shift. He is a part of our special operations team out there, part of the water rescue team. So we're certainly proud of, of the work that he's continuing to do, and, uh, I'm, I'm most happy that I didn't have to dust a spot where I could just set the trophy right back down where it goes in my office, so. Happy about that. National EMS Week, this entire week has been dedicated to the celebration of EMS agencies all across our country. Uh, both of our hospitals have stepped up in a huge way this week. They have, they have provided tremendous lunches for all of our on-duty working crews throughout the week to stop in and have a meal, so I certainly want to thank Todd Hancock with Chris's Good Shepherd and Steve Gordon with Longview Regional Medical Center. They really went out of their way. They made our crews feel welcome. The fellowship that took place at all of these, interacting with all of the hospital staff in a non-emergency setting is always a, a fun thing to get to do. So, uh, we appreciate the support, and we're, we're fortunate because we have such high-quality health care here in our city, and at the Longview Fire Department, we're certainly glad to be a part of that system. And I have, uh, have to announce a retirement. Fire Driver Engineer Scott Lake, he is the second most tenured person in the Longview Fire Department currently, will be retiring from service. Uh, his last official day on duty will be Memorial Day. However, his last working day on duty will be tomorrow. So if you're available from 3:00 to 5:00, we will be doing a send-off for him at Fire Station Number 3 at 1133 East Birdsong, uh, to wish him well on his future endeavors. And I, I certainly want to tell Scott that I appreciate the work he's done. His dedication and commitment are outstanding. We're going to miss him. He's going to leave a big void in our fire department, uh, and we wish him well in the future. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any question for Chief Stillman?
How close was the golf score?
It wasn't even close.
Mm.
Like you said, they pre-filled the score.
Okay. Thank you, guys. Uh, considering agenda, any items council polled off for separate discussion? Is there a motion?
Move or approve?
Second.
We have a motion of second on the favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Action item, consider resolution nominating Enpro Industries. Uh, Mr. Shirley.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, Mr. McPhee. This is a public hearing required, uh, nominating Enpro Industries, otherwise known as STEMCO, uh, to the Office of the Governor, Economic Development, Tourism. Uh, this is, and we've done these in the past, this is a enterprise zone project where they can apply to get rebates on sales and use tax based on, um, new employees and, uh, equipment purchases and, uh, expansion. And, uh, through this project, I believe they're looking at doing, uh, $5 million worth of expansion in equipment, uh, potentially adding a new product line, uh, as well as, um, additional, approximately 10 jobs created. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
This does require a public hearing to now open. Any question to Mr. Shirley? If not, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Shirley. As a committee interest, Mr. Carpenter.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. One of the fun parts I enjoy about, uh, this job is that when you, uh, issue the proclamations, that we get to take them to the field, and we honored the Salvation Army this past Saturday, and, uh, just, uh, had a wonderful time with them and, and got them into, uh, their proclamation was read, and, and they're carrying on the good work in our community. Then we followed up the next day with the Ride to the Wall, and Chief Stillman's, uh, Greckton truck was out there. We had the flag. The, the group was late, but we still honored them with another proclamation, and, uh, they had run into some inclement, uh, traffic in Dallas, and it threw the schedule completely sideways, but we got it done. So, uh, thanks, uh, for extending me that courtesy to, to do those proclamations, and those groups really enjoy them. Uh, Pine Tree's graduating tonight, so some of us will be trying to move along, and then the, the Little Pirates, uh, summer camp skills are coming up, and, uh, I understand that Ray Wade has most graciously agreed to help with the basketball camp. That's the top left box there, and, uh, we really appreciate his support, uh, all these, of all things basketball, since we did find out at the Broaden Grand Opening about his superior basketball skills. And so we really appreciate that. Volleyball track, soccer, and tennis, and, uh, that's all. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Snotty.
Good evening, everyone, and, and thank you all for being here. Um, Juneteenth, uh, Friday, June 16th, there will be a hot air balloon presentation hosted by the Great Texas Balloon Race. It will be, uh, in, at Foster Middle School where the parade will be ending. Uh, there will also be a dedication ceremony naming a portion of Guthrie Creek Trail in recognition of Frank Penny Edwards. So you guys, please come out, uh, definitely for these events. Also, I just want to, just an FYI, guys, we are, I know Ray in his district with the park, there's been some incidents, as well as in Stamper Park. So just as a reminder, these are things that are in our community that we need to take care of. I don't know if they're being vandalized, I don't know what's happening, but everyone, under the sound of my voice, please remember, these are our dollars at work, uh, these are items that are in our community. We need to be more responsible for it, so let's make sure that we are taking care of the things that we've been blessed with. Um, also, officially, starting tomorrow will be summer break. School is out, so let's be mindful of our children. Thank you for that. Uh, welcome, John, to the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Snotty. Mr. Wade.
Yes, sir. Um, first, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out tonight. Um, you know, I'm a big advocate of community involvement, and so it's really refreshing to see everyone here and everyone speaking to things that concern them, um, about our community. Second, thank you to the citizens of District 3 for allowing me to represent you again for three years. Um, you know, not too many people can say in this world that they have the privilege of working and working on behalf of people in a community where you were born and raised and lived for vital parts of your life. And so it's truly an honor. I'm humbled by it. I appreciate everyone that has shown me the support over the years, and I look forward to continuing to work. Um, some of the community interest, um, information. Our mighty Longview Lobos baseball team is moving on in the state playoffs tonight, and so let's everyone wish them luck. Um, the guys at Longview Game Day, which is a great organization, I've worked with them before, um, video, I'm sorry, they broadcast those games, so it'd be great to check them out. Um, I'd also, um, like to mention the new mentor orientation that's happening June 7th, Wednesday, June 7th, from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And once again, the Juneteenth celebration, as Mr. Carpenter so mentioned, I am the basketball, um, expert here on this panel.
Objection, Your Honor.
Point of order. I'm the expert. So, on Saturday, Juneteenth, there's a basketball tournament at Broaden Recreation Center, and I'm happy to see a basketball-focused thing. You know, Mayor Mack, all of us, when we grew up, you know, Longview Broaden Recreation Center was the hub of basketball. I mean, Saturday mornings, guys probably didn't make it to work on time throughout the week, but they made it there at the rec at 9:00 AM Saturday morning to play basketball. So I look forward and happy to see that returning back to Broaden. Also, there's a small, a small business expo that's happening on Juneteenth as well, from 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM, and it's being hosted by the lovely ladies of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority. Thank you very much, Mayor.
And if y'all would like to see a one-on-one exhibition of me and Mr. Wade, the Vegas odds have me as a two-to-one early favorite. I'm just saying.
That's early.
Mr. Newstead.
Thanks, Mayor. So I would first want to extend the thanks to Kristen, City Council, Mayor, and the city staff. Everybody's been gracious and, uh, welcoming and helpful, uh, while, with me onboarding and everything, and so I'm honored and privileged to serve District 4, and, uh, just appreciate y'all's faith in me. And, uh, for the community interest portion, uh, Leadership Longview, it's very dear to me. This is something that I did when I first relocated back to Longview, and it helped me get to plugged in and learn about the city and get to meet the people here that help, uh, do all the great things that they do. I had such a great experience with it. I had my wife do it afterwards the next year, and, uh, and I know, everybody's Leadership Longview, Long?
We're the greatest class ever.
Yeah. So, it's been going on for a long time, it's attested to this. Welcome. So, applicant, what?
Did you say you weren't born?
No, it says it's been going on for a long time. So, applications are still open through June 2nd. That's all I have. Thanks, Mayor.
This is awesome. Yeah. That's awesome. Okay. Ms. Gambol, follow that one.
Well, good evening, everyone, and, uh, Leadership Longview Class of 21 was definitely the best class ever, so thanks for bringing that up. Um, I also wanted to say thank you so much to all our educators, uh, fellow councilmen Snotty, for everything you do to educate the minds of tomorrow, and, um, also I want to say hello, Summer, and, um, I wanted to congratulate and celebrate all our high school seniors for pursuing, um, their life plans, whether that's going to a technical school, junior college, university, enlisting in the military, or joining the workforce. You know, the city is hiring, so, um, we just want to congratulate all of you. Welcome, Councilman Newstead, and Kristen, thank you for everything you've done. We really do care about you so much.
Mr. Purtle.
Just want to welcome John, thank you, councilman, and appreciate all the things that'll be coming up for you.
Mr. McPhee. Well, Memorial Day, city office will be closed on Monday, May 29th, Honor of Memorial Day. Trash will be collected on a regular schedule the week of May 29th. Join us for a day of thanks remembered, 8:00 AM on Monday, May 29th, at Teague Park, just as Mr. Moore mentioned to us. Remember that day and what it, what it actually means. Uh, Fireworks and Freedom Celebration, we're excited to announce the headliner for our Fireworks and Freedom Celebration, Mark Broussard. We hope you join us for fireworks, live music, special events, and more on July 4th at Longview Convention Complex. It's always a super, super, super fun time, and it's, I've said it for, going on nine years now, best fireworks show in the state of Texas. It's unbelievable, and it's free. It's free. So, uh, come on out and join us, and enjoy the, the times. Once again, Kristen, thank you for your service. You were awesome, will be missed. Ray, thanks for ponying back up again. Look forward to working with you another year, year, three years. And John, welcome to the council. I know you'll do a great job. Look forward to having you on the council as well. So thank you all for being here tonight. It's a pleasure always to be in chambers with you all, and until next time, God bless. We're adjourned.